Hey, I hear you.
Okay, there you go. We can hear you too. So just hold on and we'll get to you.
Yep.
As we get to the agenda, we'll try and move you up to the top as best we can after one presentation, if that's okay.
Yeah, no worries.
Can we do that? Just so we do the Olson's presentation and then move the law to my end up to the top?
Yeah, we can do that. Okay. All right. Uh, do we have, are, aren't you from the auditor group or? Okay, I'm just not sure who you are. So we'll get to that point here in a minute. All right. But number one will be afterward, after I get down through the, the.
After we do the volunteer, after we do the volunteer, if we can go to number.
Six?
Five.
Okay.
That'd be great. You're only skipping one, but that's okay.
Okay, that's fine. Well, welcome to City Council. It's seven o'clock. Oh, just turned to seven oh one. So thanks for coming. I'd like to ask if, oh, and we'll do a real quick roll call. And the roll call is everyone is here. You may not see Lynn, but Lynn is live on Zoom tonight. So all are present. I'd like to ask if someone would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Please repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask if anyone had an inspirational thought or would offer an invocation. Without that, I'll do it.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads tonight, grateful for many blessings that we have. Grateful to be able to sit in this city hall to discuss the needs and the issues of the city, to recognize good people and to look over the finances and the well-being of, with the capacity that we have as council. We're thankful, Father, for all the good people that work here. We pray for thy blessings to be upon each and every one that does work here, that offers services and gives their life as they work to the citizens of this town. We're grateful, Father, for all that's done and pray for thy blessing this night that we may be inspired as we go forward in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, uh, do we need a declaration of any potential conflicts of interest on anything tonight? Everybody's good. Lynn?
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, let's move straight into the consent agenda. You had a chance to look at the council meetings from the twenty first of October. Any questions or corrections?
There's a minor correction that I, I let Stephanie know about this evening.
I know they've been looking at some of the things I've sent for scrutiny errors that are, they're probably still laughing over there today. Seeing nothing else with those, let's move on to the bills. The expenditures from the sixteenth to the third, or eighteenth to the thirty first of October, the amount of one million forty-four thousand forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. Did you have a chance to go through them or do you have any questions or concerns we need to address?
I'm just gonna re-raise an issue that was brought up in a previous meeting about trying to shop here in Santaquin instead of going outside of town.
That would be good.
Auto parts specifically.
I like that. We have, we have mentioned that before, but yeah, I do know you said that. That's good. So. Uh, that covers the things on the consent agenda. I would ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Lynn?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Motion passed. Move into resolutions, but we really don't have any.
We don't.
So on to the public forum, uh, the volunteer of the month. I apologize that I'm not re, are you Bart's son-in-law?
No, my name is Kenton Phillips.
Come up to the front. We, we need.
You won't hear me if I don't speak right into the microphone.
Yeah.
Because of all the Zoom folk. My name's Kenton Phillips. I am quality assurance manager at Olson's Greenhouse. I've been employed for almost nine years and fortunately for Olson's Greenhouse, they have people like me that get the unfortunate opportunity to come and, and, and their stand. So that's why I'm here tonight.
Well, uh, I'm gonna read this volunteer of the month thing and, um, I may just touch on a couple of things that go through it tonight, but thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Uh, I wanna go through this first because I do know the Olsons. I, I have known them all my life. So, um, let me just, let me just read this.
Let's make sure we get Roy's son named correctly. Thank you.
Sorry, but that had to go in.
Absolutely.
You know, when I read that in the newsletter, I went, oh, darn it.
Yeah.
This isn't right. However, let me read this. It says, "Santaquin City is proud to recognize Olson's Greenhouses our November twenty fi, uh, twenty twenty-five Volunteer of the Month. For more than a decade, Olson's Greenhouse has generously donated beautiful flowers and greenery that fill the planter boxes lining our main street, adding vibrant color charm to our, wow, separation of duties."
Sorry about that. I gotta go back to that now. I apologize. I clicked on something. I have no idea what I did. Let's try that again.
Now, it's, I'll need a microscope.
Yeah, here we go.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry. Vibrant color and charm to our community year after year. Their ongoing support and care help make Santaquin a place we are all proud to call home. Founded in nineteen forty-two by Jack and Nola Ray Olson, Olson's Greenhouse has been a family-rooted bu, business for over eighty years. And I know, I just wanna say one thing. Jack worked very closely with Roy, his father. And Roy was out in the middle of it too. And I loved going up with my mother and also my grandmother when we would buy flowers up there in the late fifties. And, uh, it was amazing, even to the point they started growing tomatoes in these little cages you can see that were, looked like windows to me because they had hinges on them that you would lift up and pull out the flowers or pull out the tomatoes or whatever they were growing. It was a vision. And Jack and Nola Ray did take it to a new level. On the north end of their Santaquin location, visitors can find a trial garden that includes a special memorial section dedicated to Jack and Nola Ray, honoring their vision and hard work that helped the company flourish. In nineteen, in nineteen eighty, their son Bart purchased the company and focuses on direct wholesale, now supplying Home Depot, Walmart and Costco stores across thirteen states from four distribution sites. Today, Olson's Greenhouse operates eight facilities located in Santaquin, Salem, Idaho, Colorado and Arizona and employs over twenty-five hundred people, including one hundred right here in Santaquin. Their local operation features two hundred hoop houses and over thirty-five acres of growing space, along with a state-of-the-art seeding area that allows them to germinate and start plants on site. Olson's Greenhouse has built a success on quality, sustainability and community connection. The company strives to be eco-friendly and a good neighbor, continuously working to reduce environmental impact while beautifying our surroundings. Beyond their generous donations, Olson Greenhouse also invests in education, offering field trips to our local or for our local elementary and FFA students, plant tours for university horticulture programs and internships, opportunities for students pursuing degrees in plant science and horticulture. Santaquin City is deeply grateful for Olson's Greenhouse and their continued partnership in making our city more vibrant and welcoming. Their dedication to growth, both in plants and in people exemplifies the true spirit of community. Also, I wanna add Bart, as well as the rest of the family, are deeply rooted here and, uh, are members of this community that, uh, have not only worked with their business, but, uh, incorporated that business into a point to where they not only give us flowers to beautify the city, they, they have dedicated many things to help this city grow and continue to do so monetarily. And, you know, I just want to thank you. I want you to, to let all of them know how grateful we are to be a part of it. We've signed a new contract with them in this past few months and we're continuing to work even as a partner with them on, on another project and, uh, enjoy. And I'm proud to say that Olson's, uh, Greenhouse Gardens is part of Santaquin.
You know, it's, um, it's interesting. If you look at where it all started, like you were talking about getting flowers. My grandfather used to buy marigolds from Roy Olson, uh, when they worked together at Geneva, excuse me, at the pipe plant, uh, back in the, in the fifties and sixties. It goes that far back with myself. And what, I think one of the things that Bart, if he were here tonight, would love to say, the biggest thing on that is he wants to be a good neighbor. It's not easy to have trucks going up and down the street, Main Street, and up, uh, up this, these next streets over into the, into the neighborhoods. And it can be challenging. It can be loud. It can cause a lot of pollution. It can be an irritant to people. Uh, but they've been here a long time.
Really?
You watch what it started with that little picture of, of Roy out there with the little, I thought they were bunkers or something that people would climb down inside or something, you know?
That's actually the backyard of Roy's house, the south side.
It is. So if you look at that on the backside, that is now the trial garden. And I'll get to that in just a second. I don't wanna take too much of your time, but I do wanna impress upon each of you the magnitude of Olson's Greenhouse. Um, you think it's big here, but we ship to Home Depot, Walmart and Costco. We ship all the way to the Canadian border, all the way to the Mexico border, all the way from Elko, Nevada to Sioux Falls, Iowa. We have twenty-five hundred employees. Uh, part of that, a large portion of that, is the sister company that we call ProGrow. That is the merchandising side of the company. We would not be in business if we didn't have people out there taking care of the flowers, making them look good. So that's a, that's a big portion of that. But you think of the magnitude that started right there at that little, that little house. And now we have a trial garden. Olson's Greenhouse is one of the few growers west of Kansas City, I believe, that is a trial program for Home Depot, meaning we work with the breeders, we work with the suppliers. They get us different, uh, seeds to grow, to do combinations, to do new plants, perennials, annuals. We grow them right there. We grow them year-round to see how they're gonna do, how they're gonna flourish and thrive. And it's right in that Jack and Nola Ray Olson Research Garden. That is a huge thing. Olson's Greenhouse is great to, grateful to be a part of Santaquin. It's where the roots are. And it's where they always, it's where, it's where it's always started. We love to bring people down to here when we take them to our seed house and show them how we do everything now state-of-the-art. And they look out at the valley and they think this is where it all started. And it sits right up on that little hill right there. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. Uh, we do have a gift basket and a wall plaque that we want to give to you. Either you eat it all and enjoy it yourself or share it with you over in the office. But, uh, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Thank them all for having this business in our city.
Thank you for what you guys do. It's a, it's a great place to be.
Mayor, can I add a personal note?
Sure.
The very first place, I'm not gonna say that I've been to Santaquin a long time, but the very first place that I lived in, I bought from, uh, Bart and Yvonne Olson. It was right across the street from where Jack and Nola Ray lived, on Third West.
How's that? Unless you wanna hold it. No, we're gonna make you a pitcher. Well, that's what, that's what we got. Appreciate that.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
The call of that is to get me to fly. And, uh, we, we'll give the South the employees. Thank you for being here. Thank so much. No, we miss them. We'll go thank you.
Oh, the next item is in the public forum and no one signed up. So, uh, Glaide, this is your chance. You should have signed up. You would have had something to say. Gosh, we would have jumped all over it. Um, appointments, we don't have any tonight. I did have a good interview for Historic Preservation Committee. She accepted and was really happy. So we will probably bring that in the next meeting and, uh, make sure that we ratify that as well as, uh, put her to work. Probably swear, do we swear them in?
Yes.
In this one? Yeah. Okay, uh, building permit and license report.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as Norm bring that, brings that up. We're currently in the calendar year up to two hundred and thirteen total residential dwelling units, made up of one forty-four single-family, sixty-nine multifamily. And then as a side note, we have eight new commercial spaces. Uh, you can see compared to last year.
Sorry, let me pull that up. I apologize. I'm.
Compared to last year, where we were at two hundred and eight. So we're just a little bit ahead of pace of where we were last year. But we've surpassed the total amount that we had a couple of years ago in twenty twenty-three. Uh, fiscal year, we're up to fifty-three now, made up of thirty-eight single-family and fifteen, uh, multifamily with two commercial spaces. And we're just a little bit behind, uh, where we were at this time last fiscal year. So, um, yeah, that's, that's building permits, business licenses. There's three new ones. They're all home occupations. And they're up there on the screen if you wanna take a look at those. And I can answer any questions you have about either business licenses or building permits.
Okay, we're good to move on. And we're gonna skip down to number five for acceptance of Larson and Company, uh, audit report for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, Mayor and Council. So we have with us on Zoom John Hatterley, who is our, uh, the head of our, of Larson and Co. That does our audit every year. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm gonna turn a minute over to John. John, you can go ahead and introduce and just share what you have with us and, and help us to understand, uh, any thoughts that you have. And then probably open it up to the council for questions.
Sure. All right. Thanks, Council, uh, for letting me, uh, be remote. This is the one good thing that came out of COVID was the ability to not have to be in person all the time. But I'm actually out of town. So I appreciate you letting me zoom in. I'm, I'm not a real big Zoom guy. So if I sound awkward and I'm not being myself, it's because I'm not, I don't really love Zoom. But, um, just wanna take a few minutes, let you know, uh, we finalized the audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Just wanna go over the results with you guys, what our opinions are, what opinions or what we're giving opinions on. Um, and then go over the findings and then the other things that we were, that we were required to look at as part of the audit. So before I start, is there any questions going into the presentation?
You may laugh, but I did go, this is the mayor. I did read through that whole thing and, and as I spoke with the staff, they kind of laughed and laughed in response to some of the things I brought up. However, uh, I went to every detail on that and, uh, I'm grateful. It, it's, uh, reminds me of what we've gone through the last few years. And, uh, what I'm really proud of is, um, our finance department, especially, uh, Shannon and, and Norm and the time that they put into this to make it come to life the way that it has. Um, there was still a little lack in the, uh, uh, scoring. And it seemed to me like the lack in scoring, and, and maybe I'm off a little bit, it seemed to be because we don't have a committee.
So that's the audit, the fraud risk assessment. That'll come up in a minute, but that's not included in here.
Keep that thought in mind, cause I, I will, I will address that. So that's a good question that I can talk, I can talk to that.
That, that was the only one I saw. And the other thing was, is we were still above where we needed to be, to be in very good graces. And so anyway, those are the only comments I had, other than I stayed awake clear to the end. And, you know, that ought to be given some kind of notoriety for it.
Mayor.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that there was, there wasn't anything that anybody wanted me to touch on before I.
Hang, hang on just a second, John. We have a comment, I think, or a question from one of our council members.
Well, I think this is our adcock. I think I know the answer to this. I just wanna reassure myself. Uh, it said that the report said the insurance expired in, in June of twenty-five, but that's because the report that was given covers that length of time. Uh, the other, the other observation I had is I just wonder if five million dollars is enough coverage? And that's probably a staff question.
Yes, I believe that's a statutory, uh, state statutory requirement. And I think we're actually probably above the three million dollar statutory requirement of five million dollars.
I'm asking if, if it should be higher in today's market.
Uh, it could be.
Property coverage that you're talking about?
Um, I don't have that specific. I just, it was insurance and, and there was a five million dollar coverage. And, uh, as litigation-conscious people are, I just wonder if five million dollars is enough coverage for the city.
I'm, I'm not sure they made a final assessment on this and many other things. Um.
John, do you have any opinion on that as far as the, the insurance coverage or whether we ought to be considering something different?
Yeah, I, I mean, really, you're gonna wanna talk to the trust because they're gonna wanna know specifically. I mean, they have actuaries that are telling them, this is the amount of coverage that, that cities need. So it's gonna cost you more, obviously, for the amount of insurance that you have or the, if you increase it. So I would say, based on your specific needs, get your attorney and talk to the trust and say, these are the types of things that we're facing on an ongoing basis. Is this enough coverage for us?
Okay, thank you.
Right?
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right.
Yeah. We're good.
Uh, Norm, do you have, uh, something to show?
Yeah, I do. I have your independent auditors' report. Is that where you want me to start, John?
Yep. Yeah, let's just start there.
Okay.
So the first report that we're gonna look at is our audit report. It always precedes the financial statements. It's always the first report in any set of financial statements that you look at that's been audited. Um, our opinion is the first two paragraphs of that report. Now, I'm gonna tell you that it's unmodified or unqualified. And you're gonna read those paragraphs and you're gonna say, wait a minute, I don't see those words. That's because the way that the report is written is very accountant-type language. But what an unmodified opinion or an unqualified opinion means is we didn't change the language of this report based on anything we found in our audit that we could not either come to an agreement on or test or that you were not applying accounting principles correctly to where there were material misstatements in the financial statements that would then make us change this report and describe those situations. Then you would have a qualified or a modified opinion, which in layman's terms, that's not a good opinion. Unqualified or unmodified is a clean opinion. So if you can keep that straight, even though it doesn't say those words. So that opinion is directly related to the financial statements. And that is the primary scope of why you guys hire us is to look at your financial statements line by line, note disclosure by note disclosure, to make sure that they are materially correct and fairly presented. Now, materiality is something that we determine based on what fund that we're looking at. Materiality gives us a little bit of grace where we're not looking at every penny that the, the city spends. We have to do our audits based on samples. Um, and where, because we have to do sampling, our opinion is there's a kind of that caveat of materiality where it's, if you wanna call it a scapegoat, maybe, but it's not an absolute assurance. And if we read in the audit report, it talks about how there's almost never an absolute assurance, right? Because of the, the type of testing that we do as part of an audit. And that's, that's very similar. Doesn't matter if you're a private company, nonprofit, government, all the audit, it's, it's all the same. Um, and you can see our standards in there. The standards that we follow, we follow both generally accepted auditing practices as well as government auditing practices. And there are differences between the two. We'll talk a little bit more, more about that in the next report. Um, in the section under management's responsibility, uh, it talks about going concern. And I just, I, I kinda point this out. This, this is a new requirement that you have as a city council and as well as Shannon and Norm as they're going through operations during the year, um, as they're accumulating things for the audit. If there are negative conditions or events that come up during the year that have an, a, a significant negative impact on you, you're now required to disclose that to us and have a financial analysis or other type of analysis of this is how we're gonna overcome this situation. So if you have maybe one significant property taxpayer, uh, a big corporation or whatever, and they say, you know what? We're leaving Santaquin. That is a negative consequence to your fin, fin, financial situation. So what are you gonna do to overcome that? Do you have enough, you know, fund balance to, that it, you can absorb it? Um, are you looking to replace it? What are you gonna do? So this is a direct result of COVID. So COVID had negative impacts on private companies, governments. Um, inside of the state of Utah, we were actually really blessed as far as governments go. Um, we, we actually, there, there weren't a lot of negative, negative impacts, but there were nationwide. So that's why the standard changed. So those are the types of events that, that we're looking for and now you're required to look for, important enough that now they include it as part of the audit report. The only other thing I'm gonna point out on the audit report is on the second page, Norm, uh, there's two different sections, required supplementary information and supplementary information. So required supplementary information is the management's discussion and analysis, which always follows the audit report and precedes the statements. And then after the notes to the financial statements, there is a section called required supplementary information. That information is not part of the basic financial statements. However, the governmental accounting standards board says that those two sections always have to be with the financial statements to give them more readability and understandability. What that means is if you don't like to get in the weeds of the numbers, I would recommend that you read the management's discussion and analysis. It's a lot more layman's terms and a lot more, uh, qualitative information rather than just quantitative raw numbers. There's a lot of comparisons between last year and this year. Um, so it, it helps you understand what the financial statements are saying and the picture that they are painting. Um, that's why it's part of it. But because they're not part of the basic financial statements, they do not fall under our opinion. Supplementary information is information that is either required to be attached to the financial statements or, um, you've chosen to show, to give more detail from what's presented in the financial statements. And for, for Santaquin, it's either gonna be a single audit, which you do not have this year, or it's your combining non-major fund statements. So sometimes your funds, the amount of revenue or cash or liabilities inside those funds is small enough that they aren't presented individually by themselves. They're grouped together. And if they're grouped together, you don't ever see, okay, what's the detail of all these funds? You've chosen to show the, that detail as supplementary information. And that also, that does fall under our opinion on the financial statements. So there is differences on what's included and what's not included in our opinion. All right. The next report we're gonna talk about, Norm, is on page sixty-four of the financial statements. I'm not sure which is the PDF, but if you just go to the fifth to the last page.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm getting there right now.
Yep. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here because there are not any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. What this report says is that we, we've performed your audit in accordance with government auditing standards. I said that there were differences. The major difference is we are looking at your internal controls to make sure that A, you have controls in place and B, they're functioning the, the way they should. We don't give an opinion on controls because we don't test enough of a sample to give an opinion, but we test them enough to make. But we test them enough to make sure that what they're intended to do, they're actually doing. Um, so Mayor, when you, when we're talking about the fraud risk assessment, um, I don't like that document for the purpose of what it, it is being used for. What that document should be used for is for you guys to start talking about as a council and with management. What risks do you have? And how do you address those risks? So what controls do you have to put in place to address the risks of either fraudulent behavior, misrepresentation in the financial statements, uh, you know, fraudulent reporting in the financial statements? So all of the things listed on there are controls that will help you do that. I don't like the fact that they score on that document. So once they added the scores to that document, I think it lost its original intent. Um, so I don't put a lot of stock into that. I know that your insurance does, which I'm currently working with a state auditor to rectify because I, I don't agree with that. Um, but I, I agree with you, Mayor. You have all of those items on that sheet except for an internal auditor and an audit committee. And there are very few governments inside the state of Utah who actually have an internal auditor on staff or an appropriate audit committee. I don't know of any outside of Northern Utah County and Salt Lake County, and they're typically the larger cities. Not to say that Santaquin cannot put together an audit committee or a finance committee. It's going to probably be one member of the council, potentially one member of management, but it cannot be Shannon. Um, and then a couple of members of the community that have financial background knowledge. That is who needs to be made up of your audit committee because they have to be as independent as possible from the city. And how we utilize audit committees is they're going to be doing things, uh, like they're going to be communicating if you had an internal auditor on staff, they're going to be communicating with them. They're going to communicate with us as the external auditors of things that don't show up as findings that we're either recommending best practices or hey, we have these concerns, these are what we want to see fixed, but they don't rise to the level of a written finding. Um, if, and the reason why Shannon cannot be on there and probably not Norm is because if we have concerns with the way processes are being done or, um, either behavior problems or, you know, things that we found in the audit that may be a little bit, um, I don't know, I don't even know what the term is to use because it's not character. It, it's not basing it on somebody's character, but maybe, um, things that are happening in the financial statements that probably shouldn't be happening, that's who we would discuss it with is the audit committee.
Um, I, I just want to interject one thought here. And as, as I read down through that, and especially as I looked through your selected test, uh, criteria, as you compiled all of those things, I, I kept thinking to myself, why would I want to go back to a committee if everything is showing green lights all the way through? And, and my reason behind that, or at least what, what I was saying to myself is, is there is nothing that's flagging this red in any condition except for we don't do it with a committee. And, uh, that committee is confusing to me because it's either something where we would have to either spend a lot of money to do it with an, with another auditor or to have people that would, uh, give of their time to the extent that, uh, understanding the budget, understanding the way that the money flows, understanding all of this is a, a learning curve that's hu- humongous. And, uh, I just, I just felt like it seems strange that twenty points were given for that committee when in fact, I don't see a need for it. And, and the need would be bec- because I had seen something in this audit that would clue me to that. And I, I ruled that out, I guess.
Yeah, and let me throw the caveat in there. Like, I'm, I'm not going to say you don't need to have an audit committee because that would, that would not be me, good of, as, for me as an auditor to say, hey, there's this really good control out there, but you don't need it, right? So tongue in cheek, an audit committee is a good practice. But there are other mitigating controls that you can do, which you already are doing out of the city. Um, we spent a lot of time going through the financial statements. Uh, all of the, the balances in, I, I, how many times a year do we meet, Norm?
Well, probably at least monthly. We are either on the phone or we're texting or emailing or we're talking and meeting just because we want to make sure that we're understanding that we're doing it right, knowing that at the end of the fiscal year, we're, we're in the right spot. We're, we're doing the right things.
In, in the end, it's being the guardian of that money.
Mayor, go ahead, Mayor.
I, I say in the end, being the guardian of the money, uh, and counting it as almost sacred money because a lot of it comes from taxes and we're trying to take care of, of bills and, um, wages and all kinds of things that are rolled into that. I, I look at those as, as very sacred funds when we start and go through the budget. And I, I don't see anything different when we're going through this audit and seeing your report by taking a snapshot of a, a bunch of different areas and finding it all in good standing. And, you know, mu- shame on me because I would feel like I would follow that and then wait until I see a red flag or a yellow flag that says, hey, we need to jump on something. But to this point, I'm very satisfied with the way that things are being done. And I don't care about those twenty points from the commi- from the committee.
Yep. And a, and a lot of what an audit committee, what we would do with an audit committee, we're already doing with Shannon and Norm. We're, we're meeting, going over the financial reports. They have questions. They'll reach out. They want to understand, which I am extremely impressed with your financial staff. I just, I, I have to throw that out there. Both Norm and Shannon, um, they recognize that they don't understand everything one hundred percent, but they want to, and they ask the right questions. So you, I know that Santaquin is having growing pains and, and, I mean, you're probably getting hit worse than, you know, most of the cities. I think some of the cities further north had those growing pains earlier. You're kind of feeling those growing pains and I know that there's going to be frustrations, but I want the council to know that, that at least the finance staff are asking the right questions and they want to do things right and they want to present to you the most correct information. Just, I, I, I wanted to throw that out there because I, I, I am very impressed with the questions that are asked. I probably talked to Shannon and Norm, like Norm said, at least on a monthly basis, if not more. So I, I appreciate the questions, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, the last thing, and then I'll, I'll let you guys get back to your meeting. So the last opinion that we gave is on your state compliance. And that's two pages down, Norm. So page four sixty-six.
Okay, I'm there.
So we are actually giving two opinions on your state compliance. We're looking at A, are you in compliance with those areas that are outlined? And B, do you have controls to make sure that you're not going to be out of compliance in the future? So basically, if you want a simple definition of what a control is that we're looking for, we're looking at somebody is doing something at some point in time. That is a control. So that's the definition. So it's different than a process. We can look at your processes, but we're trying to identify, okay, who is doing what, when, to make sure that you do not file, fall out of compliance. So those are the two things that we're looking for. Also an unmodified opinion. Um, we didn't find any areas with compliance. So if you want to look on page sixty-eight, that's our schedule of findings. So once again, no state compliance findings, no financial statement findings, uh, nothing that we're required to, to outline or give you a finding on as far as government auditing standards or generally accepted auditing standards. So any questions for me?
I'm good.
I can go over the bond compliance and the, the communication letter, but I don't know that it's really relevant for, for this meeting. So if you guys have questions on that, feel free to, feel free to reach out to me.
Yeah, I would also, thanks, John, for that. I would also report to the council and the mayor that we did go up in our fund balance and our general fund balance, we went up as expected. We put some funds in there. Uh, we went from twenty-one and a half percent last year to twenty-seven and a half percent this year. So we're moving in the right direction, just like we planned on. The three hundred and thirty thousand that we paid back from park impact fees for the purchase of the cemetery has been, was put back in there and it's doing what it's supposed to be doing and getting us back up towards the thirty-five percent, although we're still a couple of years away from that. Happy to answer any questions that you have on that. And, and this is the report that gives us that number. That's why people are like, well, what, what do we do? I'm like, I don't know until the audit is done and we have the, the, the end game, the end report. I, we, we really can't know that because there's, there's stuff that goes on in the background that they do for all their auditing purposes and working with our Polora software folks that, that we just don't know until we get to this exact point. But I did want to report that back, that we are moving in the right direction with that rainy day fund balance. Any other questions before we let John jump off? Thanks, John. We appreciate you being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks again, everybody.
Take care.
Okay.
See ya.
Um, from this, I think we could go up to item four. To the resolution for, uh, approving the acquired, uh, required annual fraud risk assessment?
Yes, and we have our finance director Shannon here with us and she will walk us through that. Just, I, um, yeah.
Do you have it on the, you have it on screen?
Yeah, let me, you want me to just run a page?
As John was, uh, talking about, the fraud risk assessment is a annual, um, uh, review of our internal controls and separation of duties and just policies and procedures that, that we have in place to make sure that we are mitigating um, and, or preventing any fraud within the city. So just as he mentioned, during the audit, um, all those controls, they sit with our staff and they, um, they get deep into like our processes and how are you doing these things? Give me proof. Show me this. Um, so each of those things are, are reviewed every single year to make sure that we're doing it, um, as required by law and in compliance, um, with audit standards. So, um, on the fraud risk analysis or assessment, that number one is, um, the things that he was talking about, the separation of duties. So if you can go to that second page.
Yeah, sorry.
So the second page right there is just a, a list of questions about, are you doing these things? Are there separate people that have access to checks, that are signing checks? And, um, are there reviews taking place? Are, are there separation of duties? So if we can, if we can answer yes to every single one of these or no, but we have mitigating controls and that's what that no and the MC, um, line stands for, then we can give ourselves two hundred points on that, that very first number one, um, with the basic separation of duties. And as you can see, all of ours are either yes or, or no, but we do have mitigating controls. And like I said, the auditors actually sit down and test this. They wanted, they wanted to know that, we didn't just mark yes on this. They wanted to see where are those, where are those policies under number two? Show me where those policies are. Give me proof that you had a member of, of management, um, at least had forty hours of training in accounting. Um, they, um, they go over all of this with us. Um, so with that said, I don't know if you guys have any other questions on the fraud risk assessment and the scoring that was given on it?
I just have one question. You mentioned that this affects insurance coverage and premiums?
So our, um, our insurance company requires that we give them a copy of this fraud risk assessment. And they take that into account with, um, I'm sure, uh, giving us our premiums of what our risk of fraud is. So they just require that we do this and we upload a copy. Not only the state auditor requires it, requires it, but our insurance company requires it.
Do you feel like it has like that big of an impact?
Um.
Like with the, the thirty-five points?
No, I don't, I think as, as long as we're at low or very low, I don't know that it's going to make much of an impact.
Okay, okay.
And, and as John Hatterleyan pointed out, this didn't used to be numbered. It used to just have checkboxes. So they've add, for, for whatever reason, they've added this numbering s- s- scheme at the top and, and allowing points. It used to just have a yes or a no column and that was the way that it was. For whatever reason, the state auditor has changed it to this. And, and as our auditor indicated, he's not a real big fan of that. And, and I can understand why because those thirty-five points that we could potentially have, I mean, it might be two FTEs, right? It might be two full-time equivalents of, of folks that we would have to hire to be able to get there. A- and one of those could potentially be an accountant.
Well, I think you go into a committee and try to throw that on there and have to pay back a committee that you come as another independent audit of it. I, I think that's just a waste of money.
All of that said.
They want to make more money off us.
All of that said is, we're, we're at what they qualify as a low risk. And so to us, very, very low risk. And so to us, we're, we're meeting the standards. We're probably exceeding the standards. There's likely folks in the state, I don't know who, but probably that are in the other categories that are lighter green or yellow or, you know, stuff like that. Because, I mean, we see it in the news all the time, right? There was a county down south that a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars or whatever went missing over several years from the building department because they didn't have controls in place. The control that they didn't have in place was they didn't have the people that was accept, they didn't have separation of duties. They, they didn't have somebody that was accepting the money, somebody else was accounting for it and somebody else was depositing it. It was all the same person. So in, in that type of a case, we have a control that will not allow that to happen. And so in those types of cases, it could potentially be really easy to cook the books, right? Not that we are, but that, we, we, we are trying our very best. And as John said, we, we contact them. Sometimes we'd contact them once a week saying, hey, we've got this situation with a, an anonymous donor that wants to do this or some, you know, I mean, you, you, you kind of understand what I'm saying. We, we, we're not experts in the accounting field, but we know people that are and we employ them to help us to make sure that we're in compliance. And that's what their report is showing is that we're in compliance.
I, I've always liked the idea of the two signatures on the check. The rest of the things that we go through, it doesn't bother me in the least bu- bit to not only see it or to even participate. So I, I feel like all of these things are being hit correctly.
And I think the, the, the biggest reason for something like this is just so, um, you know, we're doing our best to prevent or mitigate any, any fraud within our city. So, um, putting those controls into place, um, and, and making sure that, um, you know, we have the separation of duties to make sure that there's several pairs of eyes looking at everything. Even the review of the bills coming to you, that's just another set of eyes looking at it. After it's gone through four different sets of eyes, you're the fifth set of eyes looking at it. So those are the types of things that they just want to make sure that we have in place to, to mitigate or prevent any fraud.
And nobody can get past art with those bills.
That's good. Questions are good. So with that, um, I don't have anything else on that.
You probably just asked yourself, did he really read all those things?
I know you did.
You know, you know what? I, I feel like of all the things that we do as a council is make sure that we're also aware of where all of these bits and pieces fit together. And the pennies that are added in from here, there and everywhere are accounted for. And that's why, to me, it's important to read through to be able to say, okay, we're good. And we're good with every check and balance that I've seen you make. And this isn't really new. We've gone through this for the last four years.
It's required to be updated with, for the audit period every single year to make sure that we're still doing those things. We still have the same, the, the, um, policies in place that we need to have in place. Make sure that even you guys play a part in it. You're receiving your annual training. That's one of these questions on here is, is the governing body receiving their annual training on elections and all that kind of stuff, so.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I just want to compliment the staff that handles money and Shannon and Norm specifically, of course, as was mentioned. As I read through this, the, I looked at significant res- risks. Improper revenue, cash disbursement, potential management bias, overridability, none uncorrected. Bond compliance, no areas of bond non-compliance. I mean, it's, it's just a shining example of the way, um, government funding should be and is monitored, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I want you to know that Shannon and I hold ourselves at the very highest standards, recognizing the sacred nature of the funds that come to the city. We, we, Shannon will tell you that, that I probably send more bills back to people to make sure that there's more clarification and more information and the right information on it before I approve it. Just because if my name's on it, I want to make sure I understand what I'm signing. And, and Mayor, I read the whole thing too.
Man, we're nerds.
I read about ninety percent of it. Some of this stuff doesn't mean anything to a non-accountant.
Yeah, there is a lot of, there is a lot of accounting jargon in there that's really challenging.
So thank you.
Mayor and council, I would just note that we messed up and have Emily's name still on the resolution. So at the time of a, of a, of a motion, just including your motion, please to change it to Stephanie so that she can sign that resolution since she's now our recorder.
You did make that change on the, okay, good.
Yeah. It will be ready for you to sign with her name on it rather than this one, but it's just bringing it to the council to show that, again, we're not perfect, but we can make corrections.
Okay. So with that and the discussions we've had, are there any other comments or anything from this risk analysis that we've gone through? Then I would entertain a motion for the resolution approving the required annual fraud risk assessment. With the change of Stephanie from Emily's signature.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Art?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Just checking. Travis?
Aye.
Ryan?
Oh, I.
You already did it.
Did I?
I'll vote twice.
Oh, Jeff.
Aye.
Oh, yeah. Good. That was all. I just lost track. I tried to mix you guys up so you don't get complacent.
Exactly.
Well, I do. I do that quite often, but you guys always fix me, so I'm good. So, uh, that passes. We're good to go. Uh, we have a budget report that we would like to go over.
So our finance director will present our quarter, first quarter budget report.
Thank you.
So with all the talk about the previous fiscal year, we're going to talk about the current fiscal year that we're in. So as required, um, uh, by state law to give you a quarterly report of where we're at, um, with our finances. Um, we do this either here in council meeting or we've done it, um, in our budget retreat. We'll give an update, but we try, we try to meet that uh, stay in compliance with that and give you a report each quarter. So this is the first quarter report from July first to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, and I just, it's just a, a high level overview of, uh, where we're at. And I'll just go through that maybe for, um, maybe people that are listening. I might just read a few numbers here, but I'm not going to read over the whole entire thing. So um, general fund total revenues were at twenty-one percent at twenty-five percent of the year and total expenditures were at twenty-two percent. Um, a- as in past years, we've explained that the expenditures in the first quarter or the revenues in the first quarter are usually pretty low only because we receive our, um, property taxes usually in the second quarter and we get those in a big lump sum. So it'll trend a little low in the first quarter. Um, in our capital funds, just a few highlights, um, the new, in the capital projects fund, the new library construction's underway. Um, in the capital vehicles and equipment, we paid off, uh, one of our, our only lease. We had a four-year lease on some equipment. That is paid in full, um, reducing our debt service. Um, and also in the first quarter, we purchased one police truck and the fire administration truck. Um, just a matter of a note, um, we actually received the other three police vehicles just within this last one this week and two a couple of weeks ago. So, but those were paid for in the second quarter. Um, in the capital computers and technology fund, we're at twenty-eight percent. We're a little, trending a little over only because we just did a very big computer replacement. Um, so all those were done within the first quarter. Some servers, computers, uh, laptops and computers were all, all replaced. Um, in the capital roads, uh, it's showing right now we're seventy-six percent. Um, the reason behind this is, um, the amount budgeted for the Main Street project, it was under budgeted a little. We thought we were going to expend uh, um, more of the project in the previous fiscal year. So we budgeted a little bit low. Um, that will come to you in a budget amendment. So it's not, we're spending more money. We just didn't, uh, there was crossover in the fiscal years. Um, and we thought we were going to spend some money in, in the previous fiscal year, which we actually spent it in, in this fiscal year, the first of this fiscal year.
Does it, doesn't that also include the road work that's been done over the last, uh?
Yeah, so, so you'll see in the first, in the first quarter, we actually did three hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of road maintenance as well. So. Um, on the enterprise funds, um, the water fund is at thirty-two percent in revenues. Um, that is trending above and the reason for that is we've received, um, uh, development, development money in lieu of water um, over what we budgeted and also interest earnings and hydrant use. So, um, just recently we have, the, the water department has, um, purchased some meter, hydrant meters that are actually keeping track of the usage on the hydrants. Um, the contractors have to come in and they apply a deposit to get those and then they pay us for those water fees. We're tracking that a lot better now and we're receiving a lot of revenue from that. Um, on the expenditures, we're at thirteen point four eight. That's a little deceiving only because, um, we are now budgeting all of our capital projects within our enterprise funds with transfers from the impact fee funds for impact fee eligible projects. So it, it looks like we haven't spent a whole lot of money out of the enterprise funds because of those capital projects, those great big capital projects. And you'll see that in both the water fund, sewer fund and, um, the PI fund. The expenditures will be a lot, uh, low. They will look low because of those capital projects that we haven't spent money on yet. Um, and the sewer fund, the revenues are right on trend at twenty, uh, twenty-five point seven-three percent. Um, again, the expenditures look really low at, um, six point two percent because we've got a thirteen million dollar project in the capital, in the enterprise fund for the sewer treatment plant. And we're just barely starting to spend a little bit of that money. Um, on the pressurized irrigation, revenues are at forty-three percent. Um, expenditures are trending normally at about twenty-one percent. Um, on the revenues, again, the reason for, uh, the increased revenue is, uh, pressurized irrigation. That first quarter, we're still in the hot months. Um, we're still using PI. That's going to flatten out over the winter months and then pick back up at the, at the end of the fiscal year. Yep. Um, on the special funds, which is all the community service funds, everything's trending, uh, right at twenty-five percent. Um, on all of those, at the fire department, revenues are at twenty-two per, twenty-two percent. Um, and expenditures are at eighteen percent. And the reason that that's a little low is, uh, the hiring of the full-time battalion chief isn't, hasn't happened yet. And so expenditures are trend, uh, trending a little bit low on that. That'll happen December first.
That, that interview was conducted and there was a candidate selected.
Yeah, he will begin employment on December first.
Do we expect the revenues for fire department to be like exactly lined up or like sort of twenty-two percent?
A, a little bit of that is because there is some contributions from fund balance that need to be, there's four hundred and twenty thousand dollars that is acting as revenue contributions from fund balance that will be transferred into capital vehicles when the fire engine comes.
So it's just not accounted for yet?
It's just not counted for yet. Yep, yep.
And, and fire department funds can vary a little bit depending on call volume. It can depend on like we've done, uh, EMS out of the film motion picture studio. We've done EMS support out there and other things, wildland fires. So we, we, a couple of years ago, we had a lot. We had, I, I want to say two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand and then the next year was like twenty thousand. So it just depends on the year and kind of what's out there and what we can participate in and, and receive revenue from.
Yeah, the wildland fires this year are trending ahead of what we budgeted. Um, they have participated in a lot of those and brought in, um, revenue over what we budgeted, so.
Bless you.
So once that larger man is accounted for, it's going to be beyond the twenty-five percent.
Yep. Um, so overall, um, everything's performing as projected for the first quarter. And we'll just continue to monitor things like, um, building permits, um, sales tax to just make sure we're keeping up with those before we spend everything. Um, so if we need to make some adjustments, we can throughout the year.
I have a, I have a question, um, related to interest earnings and also leases. As the rate, the federal fund rate changes, do we see that impact our interest earnings? Like immediately or how are we accounting for that? Obviously as the rate lowers, uh, do you anticipate like more savings with leases or do we lock into like a rate with those leases? And do, do we see less interest earnings immediately?
So the reason why we have done leases in the past, number one, when we did this lease four years ago, interest rates were pretty low.
Yeah.
Um, but the other reason is we do it when we have a large piece of equipment. Um, the last time we did it, I believe the snowplow was on it. And so we added a few police cars and public works trucks to that lease that year. Um, because we just didn't have enough cash to pay for all of that upfront. And so we did a lease for those.
Okay.
And then, you know, it takes four years to pay that off and then those are ours, so.
So, so we could enter into another lease this coming year with, with, we've already ordered the chassis for a snowplow, for instance, and I've been working with Jason on the equipment to equip that truck. Once it gets here, that could potentially be on a lease with another four police vehicles or some other piece of equipment. We did lease the, the trackhoe a couple of years ago, the large trackhoe that we leased. That's a four or five-year lease if I remember right. But, but we don't, we don't necessarily enter leases every year. It really, I think we've, we bought snowplows and ambulances and, and then coupled those with some other leases. We don't do leases every year. In fact, you will know if we do leases because that's your purview to approve. So there's, there's no leases planned this fiscal year that we're in. She's just indicating that we've now taken one off the books that was expired or that, that came to maturity.
Historically, we just try to have one lease out there at a time.
Maximum.
And then pay cash for anything in between. But the lease is paid off, so that might be an option next year for, um, high-priced, um, costs of.
I just think as, as leases become cheaper, hopefully, you know, that's, yeah, but, and then how, do, do we anticipate less interest earnings? Like, is it significant? Do we see a big? I'm assuming that it's all like money market funds or something that's not totally.
Yeah, we haven't seen the, the reduction that we anticipated um, with the interest rates in our, um, investment holding fund of PTIF. Um, but we, we will because we're, number one, interest rates are calming down. And number two, we're spending the money in our account on these big projects. So we will see a reduction. Um, but like I said, we haven't seen the reduction with that we thought we would see. So, um, I anticipate that the amount budgeted for, uh, interest earnings may be above what we budgeted this year, so.
So there's no alarms if that's what you're asking. There's no fire alarm.
I'm just wondering how big of an impact and it seems like that we, that it will air on a good side for us. Um, from current trends, what we're seeing, so.
Again, there's no fire alarm at this point in time. It's trending as we've anticipated and we'll continue to watch that, just like we did several years ago with building permits when they dropped off the pace of the planet. We had to make some serious adjustments and we, in concert with the mayor and the council, we, we did that at that point in time. But right now we're, we're kind of holding steady of what we have anticipated. We don't see a cliff. We don't see other.
And we've talked to directors about, um, some of these large items purchases, um, that maybe we hold off until December when we get our property taxes in and we know where building permits are to spend those money. So if we did have to make a, uh, reduction or something in expenditures because revenues aren't coming in, that we're able to do that.
So another example, I can tell you that your finance director is very stingy. She likes to write checks on the first of every month because then we get all of the interest from the previous month in our PTIF account. So again, good, good financial management, good financial planning.
That's not stingy. That's wise.
She's wise. That's correct.
I think he meant that as a compliment.
Stingy, good. Stingy, good.
No.
Unless you have any questions.
Well, I do, but we'll touch on all of those over the next coming months as we get ready for first of the year again, so.
Yep, that's coming right up in the next couple of months.
Never-ending cycle.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you for your support. Um, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, there's nothing else left on here other than, uh, like to, uh, have reports and we don't, oh, we do. We could convene to all those, those, uh, community development and building authority and special service, but I don't want to. So why don't we go straight into reports and Jason?
Yeah. Mayor and council, just a couple of things. Uh, we are now officially two weeks away from, um, passport office opening up. Uh, we're making great progress with all the preparations and continuing to learn things and, yeah.
First picture was taken today.
Unofficially, but yeah, we're, we've got some guinea pigs that were, were playing with, with our camera and.
Two weeks away from what opening?
The passport office.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, well, I'll continue to, to just announce that just so the public knows that that's coming. Uh, November eighteenth, Tuesday, November eighteenth, we will be open. And we are anxious to, to provide that service to the, to the community and the surrounding area, so.
Is that the kind of thing you get an appointment for?
Yeah, so we do by, we're going to do it by appointment only.
And you call the office to schedule that or is that a online?
You can, you can book it online. We're, we're working on getting the page on our website where we have a link to where you can book appointments. Um, so, yeah. It's, it's something exciting that we're, we're anxious to get started. Another thing we, we, uh, we've gone through the hiring process and we hired another employee. Uh, this is going to backfill the position that Stephanie vacated to become the city recorder. So this is the administrative assistant in the community development department. And we feel great about the candidates we had. Appreciate council member Sitaway sitting in on those interviews and uh, that employee, uh, her name is Gwen Butters. Um, so she is going to start, uh, also in a couple of weeks on, on Monday, November seventeenth. So uh, have another new employee there. I don't know if there's any other new employees, but I know that that was one the council was interested in because of, uh, of the, the the change that happened with, with Emily and Stephanie. Um, in terms of upcoming meetings, uh, we have a lot of things still pending that are just waiting out there. Uh, we don't have anything that's really ready to be on a DRC and planning commission, so there may be a cancellation of those meetings. However, I will say for planning commission, um, next Wednesday, they are going to be participating in, I don't know, it's probably four or five years that we've been doing this now, the South Utah County, uh, plan, planning commissioner training. Uh, this year, Mapleton City is hosting that. So, uh, we are getting our planning commissioners trained and, 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 uh, give them that education that's required by state code. And then, you know, I think the mayor sent you guys emails with a couple of other updates. Uh, you, you see kind of what our plans are as we're, believe it or not, moving into the holiday season. So uh, we're, we're trying to, to just be more effective and efficient in all that we do and, and evaluate how we can be better and, and how we can uh, do things that way. So that's really kind of what came about with the, the plans for our upcoming Christmas party for the employees. So um, I think that's it for me unless you have any questions for me.
Is there a date set yet for that?
Uh, we, we have one. We wanted to just make sure that everybody was good with those, those plans. Uh, December tenth, it's a Wednesday during the day. So we will, uh, you know, we don't have necessarily plans set. We are, started to look into a caterer. Uh, but in terms of other plans and how long it'll be and what we'll do during it, we'll, we'll figure that out. But, uh, like I say, high level, just wanted to sort through some of those things and, and make sure everybody understood what, what we were looking to do.
Okay, Norm?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, um, I provided you some information. Gosh, it was probably over the weekend sometime on maybe about House Bill forty-eight and the, and the wildland urban interface code changes, law, rule, et cetera, et cetera. Would just urge you to pay attention to that. I would also invite you to join Ryan and council member Adcock on Thursday to go up to that, uh, open house, a public meeting. It's not a public hearing. It's not open house. It's a public meeting at the DNR. Uh, no, sorry, it's the Division of Fire and Forestry. Anyway, they're having a public meeting about the rulemaking on Thursday at six PM up in Salt Lake. Ryan Lynn will be taking a city vehicle and will be happy to, to drive any. drive any of you up if you want to join that, probably leaving here, I would imagine due to traffic, probably around 4:30 or so, something like that. I'll let him work that out with whomever, but as of right now, the only two that I know of that are going are going to be Art and Ryan. But you're invited to, to join with that and, and come and be a part of that. I would encourage you to go to that, even if you can't go to it. I would encourage you to, to, uh, view the webinar. The, the rulemaking, my understanding is specific to the fees that they will be coming up with over the next however long for those properties identified as higher risk in the wildland urban interface. I will also tell you, as I indicated in my email, this is, in my opinion, very incomplete at this point in time. However, we, we will continue to gather information and bring more to you at a work session on November 18th, two weeks from tonight. To have a discussion, there's, there's going to look for more information that I have been gathering with Ryan. Ryan's been gathering and, and we'll try and get that all pushed out to you. Recognizing that there are two things that the city has to do before the end of the year. One is adopt a woo, a wooey map, a wild, wildland urban interface map and a code which consists of either twenty, 2006, 2021, or 2024. Ryan is still trying to get a copy of the 2024 code so that we can share that with you and, and a, a comparison from the old six to the 2024. One of my biggest concerns about this is how is it going to affect our residents for the fees? But also how is it going to affect private property owners that we have development agreements with? We have two large developments that have development agreements that happen to be within a potential wooey interface or woo, wooey area. And I, I've asked them, the mayor has directed Brett to, um, help us to understand first of all, what we need to do. But also how could that affect some of the development agreements that we have? Because it could require things like concrete board siding. It could require things like more expensive building materials, which, which basically flies in the face of what the state is trying to push as far as more affordable housing. So I, I'm not sure how all of that works and, and all of that kind of stuff, but I would encourage you to please be involved. We're trying to, to stay with code. We're trying to be in line with state code, but also there's some concerns out there with, with, if, if all we're doing is increasing housing costs, that's not helping the housing crisis. And, and, and again, how does it affect our, our executed development agreements that we have that now have properties that are located in a potential wooey zone? And have to build homes that are more expensive. Does that put us at risk? I don't know. That's something that I've asked Brett to look into. The mayor's directed and I've asked Brett to look into. So I would just please be involved in that and make sure that you understand. We're, we're going to give you all of the information that we can. But again, as of right now, it's still incomplete.
Is this in response to insurance premiums rising?
It is. Yes, it is in response to. So, so I, I actually have Doug Welton, who is our representative here, has a, some stuff on his, on his representative page that I will send to you some screenshots that he got a letter from Casey Snyder, who was the sponsor of the bill, uh, this last year and, and quite frankly, the, the letter from, from representative Snyder seems to let downplay some of the things that we're concerned about. But again, I don't think that it addresses everything. I will send that information to you, but it does indicate in there that it is in response to, um, one, one of the concerns that's out there generally and wide, widely is that the Paradise fire in California and other Colorado fires and others have started to affect insurance rates in our state for what I will say, un, un, unlike or, or dislikes, not regular similar circumstances. But they're trying to apply it broadly because they think we have the same types of, of concerns that Paradise area did and, and that kind of thing. So anyway, that, that is what it is in response to. And I, and I, and I recognize that and I appreciate that. But as with most legislation, it's brand new, there's typically unintended consequences that we don't know about. In fact, this was passed in March and we still just barely got the rule last, the, the proposed rule last week. And yet they want us to adopt it by the end of December. It's, it's very frustrating for myself, for Ryan. The mayor's looked at it. It, it just is, there, there's parts of it that don't make sense, but that again is something that, that I believe happens often with legislation where it has good intents.
It's, it's short sighted of legislators that have absolutely no knowledge to put wildland urban interface comparative to a forest in California, to an orchard in Santaquin that's irrigated.
Right.
And, and to apply costs that are stupid. I, somebody ought to just brand that and send it to every one of those guys that passed it.
Again, mayor, I would encourage you to be involved and make sure that we understand this. And, and there are going to be some things that are going to be required of us regardless. But I, at the same time, I still think that it requires your input as elected officials. They, they will give you far more weight than they will give anything that I say.
I would imagine this makes more sense in Wasatch and Summit Counties.
Sure. Exactly. Again, we say it all the time, right? One size misfits all. One of the concerns that we had seven or eight years ago with the fires up on the mountain was they were treating wildfires that are on the backside of a fence on this wildland interface. They're treating it as though it's 50 miles inside the wilderness where nobody lives. That, that's, I, I think one of the flaws that we have in our, in our forestry management is that if it's on the other side of the fence up here on the bench in Santaquin, it's, they might, it might as well be in the middle of Montana. And that's how they treat it because it, they just, it's like they have blinders on. Anyway, I'll, I'll get off my soapbox, but please, please be involved. I, I would just encourage you to be involved. If you have questions, ask me, ask the mayor, ask Ryan. We will give you everything that we have. But again, still as yet incomplete. Um, I would also indicate that on November 12th and November, uh, 18th, if you have not received the email, there are Utah Trail Network meetings for local governments and agencies. I would encourage you to be involved in that. I sent you an email on that today that again, local representation has not existed and they put trails where I, I don't believe it makes sense. So I think that we need to be involved in that as well. I would encourage you. If you've not received that email, let me know and I'll send it to you. Um, I would let you know that on, uh, I think it's a Friday, November 21st. Let me look at that really quick. Um, so the National League of Cities and Towns Conference is in, uh, Santaquin this year. Sorry.
Whoa.
Is not in Santaquin this year. Santaquin can participate. It's in Salt Lake. And there is a free, uh, local state representative night on November 21st at 6:00 PM. It, it's at the, it's at the Discovery Museum over by Gateway and it's free to, uh, to local elected leaders. So I would encourage you to go and be involved in that. Again, you, you know that ULCT, the Utah League of Cities and Towns advocates for us very well. This is the national level and they're hosting their conference this year, uh, in two weeks up in, up in Salt Lake. Um, Main Street update, they're still working on some final touches landscaping, concrete, stamped colored concrete. You saw that we got the trail in between the two pieces of sidewalk on that west end on the north side of Main Street. The Public Safety Building has now been fully paved and I think that, that they're just starting to, to button things up and, and it's looking good. I, I really enjoy driving down Main Street now, even though there's still some cones out. It looks really good and it, and I think it will take us a long way in our, in our longevity for our city. It, it, it essentially makes it so that we're not Lehigh Main Street 25 years ago with, in our case, people going to Summit Ridge or Goshen or Genoa or Alberta with sand dunes or whatever happens to be. It's a, it's a very beautiful road and I think they've done a good job on it. And I'm happy to report that they're before schedule or ahead of schedule and they're, we're within budget on that project as well, which is knowing where we were two years ago when we started this, that's a, that's a miracle in and of itself that we've been able to get the extra funding, but also stay within budget. We've been, we've been very blessed with that. I'm happy to, oh, library, the library addition next door is going on. Uh, they're, they're having sheet rock delivered tomorrow. So they'll be starting the sheet rock. They're getting all the electrical HVAC wrapped up, plumbing is wrapped up and rough, rough plumbing and getting ready to sheet rock. Then they'll insulate and start doing other things, the ceiling, fire sprinklers, all kinds of stuff. Still, still a lot of work to do, but just know that it's progressing and, and things are moving along rapidly. Happy to answer any questions that you have on those or any other projects.
Okay. Lynn, I know you might want to go to sleep.
Lynn, Lynn texted me and said that he had to jump off and he had nothing to report, but thank you.
You're welcome.
He's welcome.
Travis.
Yes, I, I do have some news from the library. Uh, our library for the fourth year in a row has won the quality library award. So this award was presented to Jen at the annual library directors summit in September. So going four years strong there. Um, September was national library card signup month and they saw a huge increase. They had 92 new library cards when their average is usually 60 and 113 renewals. They've been busy over there. Uh, they had a paint and SIP night. They capped it at 50 attendees and the event sold out in two days. So a big hit. I didn't, I haven't been to that, but it sounds like a lot of fun. Uh, October, they had the scary stories and more. They had 107 attendees. Uh, just a lot going on over there. Some great programs. They're doing a great job. So, um, youth city council's been busy. They, they did, uh, we participated in the spooky night at the museum. And, uh, the, the trunk retreat in the park on Friday, Saturday, Friday.
Friday.
It's a Friday. I don't even remember. So a lot going on. Um, both been busy, all good things. That's all I've got.
Okay. Jeff?
Uh, I just want to touch base with that spooky night at the museum. It looked like it was a big success. I think they averaged at least 200 people a night, which is pretty, pretty good. Um, we have started working on the bikes for kids event. So we're thinking, they haven't given us a specific date, but we're pretty sure it's going to be the first Saturday of December. Uh, we've already contacted the elementary schools and we're getting names for the kids and we'll get them all verified and the waiver signed hopefully before Thanksgiving. So it's all on track for that.
Okay.
Uh, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure we have any bikes that we picked up. The other kind of checking house. I may have one too.
Yeah. Yeah. They, I specifically asked if we could bring some up and they were happy to take them.
Okay.
But they can't promise that we'll get them next week, next year. So I'm like, I don't care.
We don't care.
So, and I was, I was actually going to ask around the neighborhood if anyone had any bikes they wanted to, they're, they were looking to get rid of without throwing them away. We can do something good with them.
Maybe we ought to put something out on Facebook. Just explain what we're going to do again, that we've done it for four years and.
No, I can do that.
Does anybody have some and we'll go pick them up?
Yep.
Okay.
Will do.
All right. Art?
Well, the museum has been discussed and so has House Bill 48. Um, I took the opportunity, um, a week ago yesterday to attend court for the majority of the court session. And I'm personally grateful to have that opportunity. I, it was a real education and learning experience for me to see how extremely busy our attorney and our judge are on Mondays. Oh my goodness gracious. I didn't, I wasn't aware that the court was that busy. Um, it was a good experience for me. I really, I really appreciate the judges, uh, allowing me to actually attend inside the courtroom and sit there and listen and be quiet, which is amazing that I was able to do that. Um, I've talked to some residents, specifically my son in Arizona. I'm wondering if we could start requiring developers as they bring in these big projects, if they don't already, to dedicate land so that we could build a future fire station on it. Rather than the city, um, they're causing the problem. They're causing the need for a fire station. So why don't we have them help pay for it? The other thing is in multiple, multiple housing, um, townhouses and condominiums and, and such as that, they require sprinkler systems. Um, I don't know that we do that. Um, and even in, in some of our, this House Bill 48 thing and some of the higher mountain sides, they require private residents to have a sprinkler system. Just some things that we might want to take a look at at least and, and consider the, the feasibility or the necessity of doing something like that. Um, we are going to have to have other fire stations and I think that the developers that are causing the growth and the need for that station should help, um, at least share some of the burden for that. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Ryan?
Um, I've got not a lot, but, um, I've been absent and sick a couple of times. Uh, um, so I, I have some things, but I one, wanted to say I'm glad about the changes to the Christmas party. I feel like Shannon is always doing so much. And so having a caterer, I'm just like, I feel bad every time. I'm like, Shannon's not even getting to enjoy. Shannon, Lisa and everybody aren't even getting to enjoy. So I'm, I, I think that's a great thing. Um, also wanted to thank Shannon for, uh, explaining things so clearly and taking such good care of our finances. Um, and then wanted to thank Jason Bond, uh, because I think when you presented the passport idea, it was kind of like a far out there vision. Um, and to see it like come to reality like so fast is like really awesome. And I think it's, uh, and for anyone that's listening, I think that's like, we have really good staff that are like thinking ahead and I'm really grateful for that. Um, uh, the community service department, I think it was a little bit ago, we met with, um, the chamber of commerce to talk about, uh, the hometown markets and sands of Santaquin. And I just wanted to, uh, share how grateful I am to Shawna Jo and Ivan that put so much thought and care into these events that I think add so much character to our community. Um, and, and they're so helpful to the chamber of commerce too, and like in the hometown markets and, and helping them have ideas of how to get engagement and, um, they just go above and beyond, which is awesome. Um, uh, and I'm really grateful for them and how they helped with, uh, tonight we had, um, earlier today, I think a lot of us were there. We had the ribbon cutting for the foothill village park. Um, to give some background, when we first announced it, I reached out to the community. That's my neighborhood. And I got over 200 messages, whether text, social media from people in that community. So many people are so actively engaged and, and so, uh, there was a, there was a good turnout. Actually, I was surprised at how many people came out today, um, to that ribbon cutting. But I think a lot of people take pride in that. You know, a lot of the feedback was they wanted swings. That wasn't part of the original design. And working with John Bradley, we went back to the vendor and said, how much would swings cost? How much would shade cost to make it usable? Um, and so it was really awesome. I think it was awesome for the community to come out and see something that they cared about so much come to reality. Um, and that park has been used a lot. Um, it was even used right after they poured that flooring. So you can see little footsteps in it. Um, I'll use a little too much when it shouldn't have been used then, but, um, I thought that was really great. Um, also that half court basketball on Badger Way Park, which is also on that north end of the community was built. Um, and that was really great. Um, I did want to comment on spooky night. I get so much feedback every year from young families like my own that are like, I didn't even know the museum existed. I didn't even know how cool this building was. And they, you know, they go into it thinking, oh, it's Santaquin, the spooky night. They don't really have high expectations. They're like, I thought it'd be some rinky dink thing, like not even that cool. And they're blown away at how fun of an activity it is for all different types of families and, and sizes of families and different stages in life, how fun of a Halloween activity it is. Um, and so I'm really thankful to the museum staff, community service and youth city council. That's like always putting that on. Um, it takes a lot of work, but I just think it's so cool that so many people are discovering parts of Santaquin through these activities, um, in events. Um, the only thing I wanted to bring up, just a concern I had, um, that there's a, the trail that, um, that trail loop on Harvest View Sports Complex, that's really great. Almost every day I walk it midday to get some sunlight. Um, one of the things I noticed is that the trail goes behind the archery course.
Well, that's on purpose, depending on who's on that. Yeah.
Cause I, I thought I was like, luckily there's no archery. Yeah. Cause I, I was just, I just realized like, what if someone's walking at night? And you know, I know that there's that mound, that berm, but I just didn't know, how are we taking that into account? As I don't know if we already put in the permanent investments that we were planning for the archery. But how are we taking that into account with that loop? I just want to make sure nobody gets hurt from someone just carelessly firing too high or something.
Yeah. So the, the, uh, you may recall a while back, we talked about putting the, the Utah County Recreation Grant. Yeah, so the, the uh, you may recall a while back, we talked about putting the, the Utah County Recreation Grant. It's eight thousand dollars plus or minus, don't quote me on that, towards some archery.
No, it was eleven, wasn't it?
Could, could be, cuz it's two years in a row. Putting those towards an archery, a, a more permanent archery. I know that the archery is, is having some challenges with what do they do in the wintertime and that kind of thing, so we'll, we'll visit with the, with community services on that, make sure that we've got good safety measures, but also those funds have not been put in place yet and maybe they need to go into a different location, something of that nature, so, so we'll look into it.
Cuz I know, I know, I'm not like an archer, but I know if I was doing that, I'd probably hit someone on the trail. Because it's pretty close. Like, I don't think it takes that much of, of a mistake to just lob it over that and the trail's right there. And it, I mean, there's not a lot of light there, so, yeah. That, that was all I have.
Thank you. You know, you guys touched on a lot of things I was gonna talk about anyway. I did wanna say I didn't get my deer, so, you know, it's been a real good year and uh I am really grateful for all of you guys, especially Travis tonight. He is miserable with his cold and there's no reason to drag this meeting on, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.